Collexico Financing Authority Planning Commission Meeting is now in session. Call to order at 6:36 PM. Real call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Present.
Mayor Potem Legaspi.
Present.
Councilmember Ty Linda. Is not here. Here, but not here.
That's it for now.
Yes. Uh, Councilmember Calderon.
Here.
And Councilmember Marquez.
Present.
We have quorum.
Okay. Uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Pastor Sessena.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the blessing of being able to serve our community and be part of this great city. We are gathered here today asking for your wisdom and grant us the ability to be humble and be able to act justly. Uh, Lord, we ask that your Spirit unite us as we understand that united we are stronger and may this council and community always work as one. Let us be leaders that will plant today for our progress in the future generations. In the name of Jesus, we ask, amen.
Please be seated. Close session announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. We have no reports from closed session. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Mayor, we do, I do, uh, staff does have one request for item number thirteen A on the agenda. It's currently, uh, agenda is under consent agenda. Uh, we request that the council move that to discussion of potential items.
Okay, so that's gonna go right before item number fourteen now?
Correct.
Also, I would like to move, uh, number seventeen, appointment of general commissioners to the Collexico Housing Authority, uh, above, uh, make that above fourteen? Make that the first item?
The second item or?
Or second item.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, do I have a motion to approve? I motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Pro call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Potem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Ty Linda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll move on to presentations. Item number six, proclamation, September twenty twenty-five as library card signup month. So, we have a proclamation that each council member will be reading. I was, uh, section, so... I will start with, uh, proclamation, library card signup month. Whereas libraries are foundational to education, imagination, and opportunity, offering everything from ear- early literacy programs to digital tools that support lifelong learning and personal growth. Whereas libraries welcome all people, serving as inclusive and accessible community hubs that connect individuals across cultures, generations, and experiences.
Whereas libraries curate collections and design programs that reflect the diversity of the populations they serve, ensuring equitable access to information, technology, and cultures for all. Whereas libraries help individuals navigate life's challenges by providing trusted information, digital access, job search support, and connections to essential services.
Whereas libraries contribute to thriving local economies by equipping job seekers, entrepreneurs, students, and creators with tools and training to succeed. Whereas in times of both crisis and calm, libraries and their staff remain steadfast in supporting and strengthening their communities.
Whereas library resources help households save money, reduce waste, and make sustainable choices, all through the simple power of shared public good. Whereas a library card opens doors to endless possibilities, from books and technology to lifelong learning and imagination.
Now therefore be resolved, the City Council of the, of the City of Collexico, do by here proclaim the month of September two thousand twenty-five as library card signup month in Collexico, and encourages all residents to sign up for a library card and explore the endless possibilities it offers.
Okay, thank you. Can we please have the library manager come up or who's coming to receive the? Oh, okay.
So, thank you. I just encourage everyone to, if they don't have a library card yet, to visit us and obtain one. As this year, um, females libraries, uh, the library card has endless possibilities, so we have so many free resources for the whole community, so I encourage everyone to visit the library. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven, presentation by Lindsay Dale, Imperial County Registrar Voters, Voters' Choice Act, Modernizing Elections in Imperial County.
Good evening. Uh, Lindsay Dale, Registrar Voters for the County of Imperial, thank you so much for having me this evening. Um, I'm here to just give a quick presentation and to inform you and the public about, um, related to changes that we're planning to make in Imperial County to move our, our elections from a traditional polling site model to the Voters' Choice Act. So currently, for elections, we have fifty-six poll sites that are only open on election day. Um, this creates a little less convenience for voters, and so we're trying to move this into a more modern, um, plan that, uh, will, will help the voters and provide more flexibility and more convenience. Oh, we have the Spanish version. Can I just skip those slides? Are we good with the English version only? Okay, so there are several requirements to the Voters' Choice Act. I'm going to refer to this as VCA. So it was established by Senate Bill four fifty in two thousand sixteen, and it provides, as I said, it modernizes elections and it creates better flexibility and convenience for voters. Um, first of all, the first aspect is that every voter is required to obtain or be mailed, uh, an election, excuse me, a vote-by-mail ballot in the mail twenty-eight days before election. So you know, we are already there, we already do that. Um, Assembly Bill thirty-seven was passed in two thousand twenty-one, which mandated that all active registered voters receive a vote-by-mail ballot in the mail. So we will continue to do that. Um, the second aspect is to provide secure ballot drop-off locations. We did that in two thousand twenty-one. We installed eight ballot drop boxes. There's one right outside your city hall here, and we have those located throughout Imperial County. They're mostly at city halls, providing an opportunity for voters to drop off their vote-by-mail ballot, um, in an easy, convenient, um, safe, secure location that does not involve the mail or driving to El Centro. So we have those throughout Imperial County. Um, the second, or the third aspect is that, um, every voter will be allowed to cast a ballot in any vote center. So as I mentioned before, we have fifty-six poll sites around Imperial County. And as our current model states, you get your ballot and you are either a mail-only ballot, which the rural, um, residents out in the country are mail-only, or you have a designated poll site. So if you live here in Collexico, you have a designated poll site that you go to vote in person. If you go to the wrong poll site, you won't be able to vote regularly. You'll be, you'll have to vote a provisional ballot. And that happens a lot here in Imperial County. People go to the wrong poll site and then get frustrated because they're at the wrong poll site, they're on their lunch hour, they're in a rush, whatever the situation is, and they just vote there and they vote a provisional ballot. Um, a provisional ballot still gets counted if it's valid, if the voter is valid, um, but it does take us longer to process that ballot, and I'll kind of get into that in just a few minutes. Um, so we're gonna allow every voter to vote at any vote center in Imperial County, no matter where you reside. Um, the fourth aspect is to expand in-person early voting. So as I mentioned, uh, or recent, or earlier, we have fifty-six poll sites that are only open on election day. By transitioning into the Voters' Choice Act, we will open up more locations that are, excuse me, fewer locations, but they will be open more days. Okay? So voters will get to choose when, where, and how they vote, which adds flexibility and convenience for our voters. So, under the Voters' Choice Act, we are required to open one vote center for every fifty thousand registered voters. In Imperial County, we have ninety-three thousand registered, active registered voters. So that would require us to open two vote centers for ten days before the election, for eight hours a day, plus election day, seven AM to eight PM. Um, here in Imperial County, we've decided to open three vote centers in our most populated cities, so one in Brawley, one in Collexico, and one in El Centro. In addition to this, we would be required to open one vote center for every ten registered voters, ten thousand registered voters. Um, so that would equate to about nine vote centers that are open for three days plus election day. However, because of our, our very big geographical area that we have, we decided to open eleven, and so we would have them in the areas of like Calapat, Hopewell, um, Heber, Imperial, um, Nyland, Heber, Saltin City. And then we'll have additional ones open, a second location opened in those populated areas, El Centro, Collexico, and Brawley. So, uh, so Collexico would have two vote centers open. One would be open for eleven days and one would be open for four days. Okay? So, one of the aspects that assists with that is flexibility. Um, well, let me go back here. This is a map, I forgot this map was on here. This is a map that shows where those locations would be. The red locate, the red stars are the eleven-day locations and the blue stars are the, the four-day locations. And again, they would be open on the extended days, on the eleven days, it would be open the first ten days for eight hours, election day, seven AM to eight PM, and then the four-day locations would be open Saturday, Sunday, Monday before the election for eight hours, and then on election day for, um, from seven AM to, to eleven, or excuse me, seven AM to eight PM. So, benefits of the Voter, Voters' Choice Act, um, convenience. Voters, as I said, voters can go to any vote center in Imperial County. Um, you all were on the ballot in November, right? If I remember correctly, every one of you were on the ballot. And if you remember, um, we, we released our results every evening at five PM, but then we got to a point where we stopped releasing, and that was because we were counting our provisional ballots. Now, as I mentioned earlier, provisional ballot, there's a lot of different reasons a provisional ballot would be cast. Most of the time, it's because of the voter went to the wrong location to vote, or they did not have their vote-by-mail ballot to surrender. We had five thousand five hundred provisional ballots last year. Now, just to put this into context, Orange County had about the same amount as we had in Imperial County. Orange County is a vote center county, they have millions of people. We are non-vote center at that time, and we had five thousand five hundred. It takes about ten to twelve minutes per provisional ballot for us to process. The process, the, the amount of verification that we have to do and the computer work and everything takes about ten to twelve minutes per ballot. So it took us an additional two and a half weeks to process those, those provisional ballots. Under vote center, we will have a significantly less amount of provisional ballots. We will still have some, but we will have a very high, significantly less provisional ballots. So therefore, we can be able to release our results much faster. Um, as again, vote centers are open for four to eleven days. This will benefit or be a benefit to our firefighters. My son's a firefighter for the county and he works three-day shifts, so he works three days on, three days off. If he's on duty on election day, he doesn't have an option to vote in person. Same with my daughter-in-law, who's a nurse that works twelve-hour days. Or our senior population and disabled population that rely on family and friends to transport them to and from the poll sites, Tuesdays might not be the best day to do this. So when we're open on Saturday and Sunday, this is a, maybe a more convenient time. Um, vote-by-mail ballots will still be accepted at all vote centers. So anyone can drop off their vote-by-mail ballot either at the drop box or at a vote center. Um, availability, as I mentioned, all ballot types will be available at every vote center. So if you live in El Centro, but you work in, or excuse me, you live in Collexico here and you work in El Centro, and it's easier for you to vote in El Centro, you can go to the vote center in El Centro and vote the ballot with Collexico contests on it. So you'll be able to vote the ballot with Collexico Unified School District and Collexico City Council and Supervisory District One. You'll be able to vote those ballots. Right now, as we have that, you aren't able to. So under vote centers, all ballot types will be available. And we'll also have real-time access to voter registration and activity. So we'll be able to tell when a voter arrives, if they've already voted. So when they come in, they will give us their name, we will check it out, and we'll be able to see if their vote-by-mail ballot has already been suspended, since, been, um, deposited and processed. Um, if it has, we'll address the voter. Um, we'll also be able to cancel your vote-by-mail ballot. So if you come in without that vote-by-mail ballot, we'll be able to suspend it right there and issue you a new one. Um, accessibility, all of our vote centers will be located at ADA compliant, uh, facilities with sufficient parking and close to proximity to public transportation. This is a major issue for us now. We rely, because we have so many locations, we rely on schools and churches. Um, schools are, are, are starting to tell us no, more and more because of security for their students. Um, churches are starting to come back and say no because they want to remain nonpartisan. So we're starting to lose a lot of those locations. Um, we will be working with your city manager and your city staff, hopefully, to identify the perfect locations for Collexico. We have a couple of ideas, but we want to make sure and hear from your community that these are the perfect locations for Collexico. Um, accessible ballot marking devices will be available at all of our vote centers. Um, these devices, we, we introduced them to the county in two thousand twenty-one. They provide a touchscreen, um, so it will help, uh, voters with disabilities, with hearing impairment, with visual impairments, or just anyone can use those, those tablets as well. Uh, we'll have bilingual resources and material at each location with both English and Spanish accent, um, or, or it, uh, language accessibility. And we'll also remote, have remote access vote-by-mail. So what that is, is remote access vote-by-mail is not new to California, but it is something that we want to promote. It allows voters to mark their selections using their own compatible technology to vote independently and privately in the comfort of their own home. Um, this is not internet voting. This is used in the case where we have maybe a, a person that is bedridden, that got their vote-by-mail ballot but made a mistake. Um, they'll be able to give us a call, we will provide them with a link to, uh, our website that provides them with their ballot. They go through a, a screening process, they'll get their ballot, they'll be able to mark it using their, their own computer, print it, and then mail it back to us, where we will have to verify. They'll sign it just like a vote-by-mail ballot. Um, it also helps our military and overseas, uh, voters, um, when, when things are, you know, mail doesn't cut, quite get to them in time. So to get there, to get to the Voters' Choice Act, we have developed the Election Administration Plan. You can view this on our website in both Spanish and English. Um, it provides us the guidance to transition into the Voters' Choice Act. It provides us with our budget and our outreach, um, plan and where we're gonna locate these, these vote centers. So anyone can take a look at that, and we do recommend that you all take a look. I know that some of our, um, executive summaries are in the back, am I right, Ronnie? Okay? Then, and so it gives you a one-page little summary of what it is, if you don't want to read the whole twenty-five page document. Um, and then our timeline. So, um, through this process, we are required to hold public consultation meetings, which we did in June and July. Those were meetings that were focused on our disabled community, our senior population, and our non-English voters, uh, followed by a public comment period that we finished in July. And then, because this is new, and living here my whole life, I know that we don't take change very well sometimes here in Imperial County. And so we started to hold, uh, second workshops, where we had them in all of the cities. We had one here in Collexico in August. Um, and then I'm also coming to each city council meeting because I know that you broadcast and I can get more listeners when I'm here too. So we're doing that right now. Um, our public hearing, it says August, but our public hearing is scheduled for this Thursday, tomorrow, September fourth, um, at the County Board of Supervisors' chambers at three PM. And, uh, we'll have a public, a second public comment period that will run the fourth through the seventeenth, where we want to hear from the community, what you like about it, what you don't like about it, and what we can make better. Um, and then finally, we'll submit it to the Secretary of State for final approval. Um, this, if, if it is all approved, this will go into effect for our June primary election. It will not impact the upcoming special election that is, is scheduled for November fourth of this year, and I can answer questions if anyone has questions about that election as well. Um, but this will go into effect for June of two thousand twenty-six. Um, does, it does seem like a long way away, but it's not that far in the election world. And so with that, um, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer questions. We do have a special election that is scheduled, the governor called, uh, November fourth. Our office is frantically working on that. We weren't given a lot, a lot of time to plan for this, um, but we're on target, and so you'll be seeing ballots in the mail, um, to you twenty-eight days before, uh, November fourth, I think that is November, or October fifth, I think it is. Any questions?
Thank you so much for all that information, we appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, um, we're gonna move on to announcements. Before you make your announcement, I would like to make one announcement. I would like to welcome our new acquisi, newest acquisition from the City of Imperial, Mr. Jesús Villegas, who's the City of Collexico's new Public Works Director slash City Engineer. If you could please stand up and we can give you a warm welcome.
Good evening, uh, thank you, Mrs. Mayor Noricumbo, uh, council members and city staff. Uh, first off, uh, thank you very much for the opportunity to lead the Public Court Department. It's a challenging position, but also a great opportunity to help this great community, to offer the quality service they deserve. Uh, I found a great team. Uh, special thank you to Lily Falomir, who has been helping me a lot in this new era for, uh, the Public Court Department. And the, uh, door is open for whoever needs help. We are going to be assisting and facilitating the process to make, uh, Collexico be the thriving community it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, uh, Mayor Potem Legaspi had another announcement.
Yes, uh, the first one is we're, the Knights of Columbus is having a special mass on September the eleventh at seven AM for the first responders, but everyone is welcome. It's on September the eleventh at seven AM at the Ardea Guadalupe Church. Also, uh, September the sixth, they're having a nine-eleven walk. Chief Contreras, uh, has challenged the council members to attend the event.
Yeah, so it's, uh, nine-eleven stair climb at the fairgrounds.
Ninety-nine? Just kidding.
Nine-eleven. Um, so, yeah, I do challenge the council. I know there's some that are, uh, injured or, you know, uh, recovering from, um, but I do challenge the council, it, it is a fun event, it is a demanding event. Uh, luckily, it's outside, so you do get some, some fresh air. There is a, a breezy day that day, but it's, uh, uh, an homage to what happened September eleventh. It's a hundred and ten floors, so it's an equivalent of going up and down those stairs three times, and then around the track.
What's the date again?
Uh, this Saturday, September si- sixth.
Eight o'clock, correct?
Seven o'clock, um, and they'll do an opening ceremony, and then they'll kick off the initiation, which usually all participating departments, firefighters will start first, since they're going up in gear. Those that chose or choose to go in gear, uh, I'm gonna try to put my gear back on and, and, and do this, but, um, I'll, I'll, I'll finish it. Um, I know some of the, our firefighters will be attending as well, but, um, it would be great to have a city out there showing support.
What time?
Uh, seven, um, climb starts at eight.
All right.
Seven in the, uh, evening, yeah, not in the morning.
In the evening?
Yes.
And it's at the fairgrounds.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We have three days to train.
And the council challenges the members of the public, so.
And oxygens will be provided. So, I'd like to also, um, introduce, uh, an exchange student from Romania. It was sponsored by the Collexico Rotary. His name is Codruht Pirvo. I think I pronounced that right. Pur- Purvo, Pirvo? And, uh, he is staying with Camilo Garcia and Hortencia Armandaris, that's their exchange student parents. He's attending the Collexico High School, and he's playing for their tennis and soccer team. So he's been, uh, introduced, uh, throughout the valley, and, uh, he's, uh, a good kid. So I'd like to bring up, uh, Codruht up here, so I, we can give him something. And, uh, introduction to the public, here. So Codruht's gonna say a few words in Romania? Just kidding.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me here. My name is Purvo Codruț Mihai. I know it's a pretty hard name to pronounce. I'm, uh, from Romania, and I'm here to begin my exchange. Um, a few years ago, I had an idea to leave my continent alone, and the first time my parents hear that thinks it's a joke, but, but, um, now I'm here, and I'm very happy to be in this city because for me, it's a very unique experience. I feel this city is very beautiful and it's a mixture of cultures, Mexican and American culture, and I'm really happy to see, um, what adventure will be for me in the future. And I recommend everyone to, everyone to my age, I recommend to do this experience because it's unique. And I want to thank, thank my host family. Uh, I'm, I'm very happy to be in this wonderful family, and yes, thank you.
Also, Codruht's father is a firefighter in Romania, and I promised him that he wasn't gonna ride along with, uh, Chief Contreras, so if we can make that arrangements. Is he, is he gonna show up, uh, on the sixth?
Okay, do, do, uh, any other council members have announcements? No? Okay. So we will now be moving to the public comment portion. City Attorney?
Yes, there's a time and place for the public to address city council on any item not appearing on the agenda. Uh, the city clerk will recognize you, and when you're, uh, come to the microphone, please state your name and place of residence for the record. While members of the public are encouraged to participate, it is unlawful to disturb or delay the council meeting with personal slanderous remarks. The council is prohibited by state law from taking action or discussing items not included on the printed agenda. If the item you wish to comment is on the public portion of the agenda, we will take your comment when we get to the item on the agenda. Please direct your comments and questions to the city council. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I'd like to remind, uh, the public that we are limited to a maximum of thirty minutes, and if additional time is required for public comments, they will be heard towards the end of the meeting after the discussion and potential action items portion. So public comment will, the, the first part will end at seven thirty-five PM. Madam Clerk?
I will call two persons at a time. Please come to the microphone when I call your name. Brendan Bergen and Monica Caro.
Good evening. My name is Monica Caro. I live at seven-ten East Birch, and I've lived there for the past twenty years. I am here today regarding the recent removal of the parking across the street from where I live. I am here today regarding the recent removal of the parking across the street from where I live. For the past 20 years, we, the residents and visitors, use these areas daily to park our vehicles. In fact, it's the same parking area used during local voting events, including city council elections, where many of us vote for the very officials who represent our interests. No one living on Birch Street was ever notified prior to the no parking signs being placed. We have received a clear expla, we have not received a clear explanation, even after numerous emails were sent out to city council members, except for Mr. Jesus Villegas responding via email, letting us know that they would have an answer for us soon. There is also NA Narcotics Anonymous meetings being held a few houses down from my house in the evenings. All the individuals attending these classes are trying to better themselves. They mostly were parking across the street, but now they have began to take our parking. So whereas if we leave and we come back, we have no parking for our vehicles. I hope that you guys consider, could reconsider the parking for us, and maybe let us know why it is that you guys are doing this, because we were never notified. And we have no idea as to why they were placed there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next public comment.
First off, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name's Brendan Bergen. I'm with Chelsea Investments. We're an affordable housing developer in San Diego. We've been around for 40 years. A lot of our success began here in Imperial Valley. Specifically, at the City of Callexico, we've completed 10 properties, almost 700 units, serving many residents and many more over the past 30 years. I'm here tonight to talk about a very important project to us, which is also a somewhat of a landmark to the city. It's the Dianza Hotel. It's almost 95 years old, and just over 20 years ago, it was converted from a hotel to housing for 94 households for seniors, also some commercial businesses, and the Cultural Arts Center. As you can imagine, being 95 years old, it has many needs. Most importantly is a elevator that breaks down. Number of AC units that need to be replaced, among many other things. And so this year, we were awarded funding from the state to basically breathe life into this hotel and extend its life another 10 to 20 years. And in order to accept this funding, we do need some participation and support from the city, requiring some action. And so I have basically a letter of support from all the residents, as well as the recreational center that I can circulate. But really, what I want to do is hopefully have other conversations and answer any questions to move this forward. It's a very good story. Hopefully, by the end of this year, it would be great to invite everybody to a groundbreaking over the course of the next year, engage the community, and really recognize anything historic, any stories they can share about the hotel. And then at the end of 2026, invite everyone to a grand reopening and celebrate. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Javier Gonzalez and Fausto Valenzuela.
Honorable Mayor, members of council, and members of the public, Javier Gonzalez, I'm here representing Kennedy Gardens Neighborhood Watch as their captain. By the way, last year, I finished it, the 9/11. It's not that easy. Don't commit yourself, because it's not that easy. Anyway, I'm here to invite the mayor and our city manager to our next Neighborhood Watch meeting. While there's a lot of problems in the city, we don't want to come and just trash you guys there. You guys inherit most of the problems. Most of our problems have been, you know, through many years. We've worked on them. Just recently, we fixed most of the public safety issues, as you know. The Kennedy family donated some lighting for all our parks. The IID put new lighting in our streets in Callexico and throughout Imperial Valley. The IID also closed all the fences in the canal. They put new DPPD Child Safety. But while I'm here, I want to invite you, we've met with every permanent city manager in the last 30 years. And we don't want to discriminate our new city managers who's not here, but we want to invite you publicly, so we can sit down and discuss several issues. Some of the issues are El Peso Market, you know, we're starting to see rats coming from there. Every entrance to our neighborhood, it's deplorable, and I don't want to discuss them here. We want to sit with you guys. How can we fix them? Coming through Zapata, you know, the retention base, it still has water. The water doesn't go until it evaporates, because the pump hasn't been fixed in years. So I'm just here to invite you and our city manager to our next meeting. I know he's sick. We're gonna schedule it, probably on a Thursday or Tuesday evening at 7:00. It'll be a little round table in our park, and we can sit down and discuss at least three of the biggest issues in our neighborhood. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Fausto. Vengo nuevamente a solicitar que si nos pueden atender a limpiar y poder el corredor que tenemos a las orillas del río. El año pasado, no lo hicieron, pero se olvidaron de ello. Es como un parque. Hay que estar dando mantenimiento. Ha sido un año de eso. Y ahorita pues ya hay ramas que invaden la pista, árboles caídos, secos. O sea, hubo una ayuda muy buena que nos dieron ahí, que nos repararon el sistema de agua, que los árboles volvieron otra vez a crecer. Y de hecho, hay mucho broto que probablemente se puede utilizar para los parques o algo, para un trasplante. Pero no es un servicio que se pueda hacer, por decirlo como un parque de beisbol, fútbol. Cada semana cortar el césped. No, puede ser cada cuatro meses. Estar al pendiente y que los árboles crecen. Hay árboles caídos con el aire ahorita ya, que se cayeron. Pero necesitamos que nos apoyen en ese aspecto, que no lo dejen en el olvido. Los estos de basura, tienen basura. No estoy diciendo que está vomitando. Pero yo creo que desde que se inauguró, ahí está la basura y los estos. Ni la basura recoge. Por favor, ayúdense en ese aspecto. Es muy usado por varias personas que vivimos alrededor y que vienen de otras partes a hacer la caminata. En las mañanas y en las tardes. No lo olviden. Si gustan, vayan y vean ustedes con sus propios ojos. Que no es mentira lo que estoy pidiendo. Ahí está la vista de todos. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, sir.
Rudy Rocha and Junkim.
Good evening, council members. My name is Rudy Rocha. I'm the Senior Regional Portfolio Manager, on behalf of ConAM, that manages affordable housing here in Imperial Valley, and also here locally in the City of Callexico. The purpose for me to be here today is to advocate on behalf of the senior residents at Dianza Hotel. As you heard Mr. Bergen earlier regarding modernizing Dianza, one of the challenges that have, our residents have faced, have been the unreliability of the elevator. And just to kind of give you guys a little context and perspective on it, Dianza being that it's as old as it is, the equipment is outdated. So a lot of times, when our elevator goes down, it's not a matter of fixing it next day. There's times where it's lasted weeks or even months, just because these parts have to be custom-made. This unfortunately affects our residents. Our elderly residents and disabled have to be confined in their homes for weeks to months at a time. Many are wheelchair-bound, some of them live alone with no family, have limited access to medical care and essential services during these times. We have witnessed many residents miss critical appointments. They go out without the necessities, the basic needs that they have. A lot of them suffer in isolation, simply because they cannot live or they cannot leave their units. The building has three floors, so some people can't. They're just, they're wheelchair, they're on the third floor. They can't come down. We are very grateful to our local fire department of the City of Callexico that has really supported us during these times, no questions asked, and also our onsite teams that are there. But being realistic and practical, we understand that there's only limited things they can do for us. So I'm here to respectfully seek for your support on behalf of our senior residents of the City of Callexico to approve the plans of modernizing Dianza, and also the current elevator, and the additional elevator that's in the plans for the building. We also ask that you stand with us to be able to be a voice for our senior residents, so that they can live with safety, live with dignity, and independence. We need your help, and most importantly, our residents depend on it. We thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, council members, and the city employees, and citizens of the Callexico. Actually, I was planning to talk about the city manager, but the person is not here. I don't like to talk when the people aren't here. So I'm gonna wait for the next. And same time, I really, I have another, talking for another agenda, but I'm really disappointed with our city council members. I'm not gonna individually targeting yes or no. But first of all, we will have a new city manager coming in, and we have the black month, which just, everybody took their vacations. New city manager. Regardless of how he is, how good or not, city manager, newcomer, so we need the city council, we need to work together. At least one month, one meeting in August, to, they can, they can address with the city manager. Without, without breaking the blockchain law, we can run the city just with new city manager. I don't care how much good was of the city or not. He have to learn what's going on, excuse me, what's going on here. And so more details, I will wait until city manager come back. But besides that, when I come into stores, when I come into the building, city hall, one senior citizens say hi to me, and then he's going home. And I ask her why. She said, they had a gathering, the meeting on the tenants, and they will need some support. But the person came in here to try to talking about the cockerels. There's a cockerel all over the place, and even when they sleep, the cockerel is on top of her body. So I don't know how they're gonna, they're gonna be controlling. And I heard another complaint with another city apartments, not the Dianza. And similarly, they have some insect to bother in their life. So I think I need the cities to need to look into that. And, but same times, we're talking about the Dianza. They had issues with the escalator, I mean, the escalator or the elevators. They, when I was mayor, they had the same problems. So it's almost, maybe 300, maybe two months, one month only, not, it's working. The rest of them, they're not working. They hired someone else.
Thank you, sir.
So I believe the city council member to find the reason to supporting decent level of their life condition on the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Juan Biarriel.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Juan G. Biarriel. I live at 605 Lincoln Street in Callexico. I'd like to talk about, and excuse me if I pronounce this incorrectly, Skarani Road. The part between Cole Road and Jasper Road. During that particular area, it's kind of, the road is cracked up, and it's got about four or five holes. But other, but that's not the bad part. Once you go past the canal, it's full of potholes. You cannot stay on the same side of the road. You have to scoot over sometimes, and sometimes you can't scoot over, and you hit a lot of potholes. I would like to know if the city could do something about this, or if maybe it's something you've already started, or I would like to know or talk to somebody who might give me some information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have another request from Fausto Valenzuela. Fausto Valenzuela.
Oh, it's only once, yeah. Unless it's, it's an item that we're discussing, we would only do one public comment. So is it, is, es un artículo de los que vamos a ver en la agenda? Porque solamente pueden, tienen, pueden hablar una vez en, in public comment. Al menos que sea un artículo, este, que está dentro de la agenda, entonces pueden volver a hablar específicamente en ese artículo.
Well, no, claro que está dentro de la agenda.
Ah, okay.
Voy a hacer breve, pero esperaré si gustan hasta la próxima sesión para hablar sobre el problema del río y la obra del río que en su momento usted.
Lo que pasa es que si le damos la oportunidad, tenemos que hacer lo mismo con todos. Y pues tenemos que, sí, o nos pueden mandar un correo también, y de ahí le damos seguimiento. Perfecto. Gracias a usted. Any more public comment?
No. I received two emails of public comments, and you both have copies, you all have copies, from Raquel Aguilar and Michael Kates.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no more public comment. We will move on to the city manager's report. But this time, I would like to make a request. I know you're sitting in, but you have a lot of answers. So some of the public comments that we received today, I know you have some answers to, both Public Works and the Police Department. So maybe we can respond so that, since we already, if we already have an answer, maybe we can address that during the city manager's report. And I just, out of the notes that I have, the Riverwalk cleanup, the Birch Street parking, and the potholes on Skaroni, because I know we're working on all three, so maybe we can give them a quick update. Thank you.
Okay, with regard to the Riverwalk, it's the first time I heard about that problem. I'm going to instruct our Parks Department, Parks Division, to go over there and start doing an assessment and any repairs or work that needs to be done, Restiture will be working on that. For Skaroni Avenue, the project to do the restoration of a big portion of the road, it already started. We make a pause to improve some manholes, which is part of the agenda tonight. And we are going to be working on improving the second half in the near future. But it's already in the regular screen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To address a couple of the comments that were made today, as far as the bug problem, if you can come tomorrow to the Police Department and let us know what's going on with that, we can dispatch code enforcement to address that. They've been dealing with some issues and addressing those type of problems, so they're very well knowledgeable about dealing with bug problems. As far as the parking on Birch, obviously, anything that the Police Department does is based on a complaint that we receive. Some of the complaints that we received in that, obviously, they always back it up with an ordinance or something that says that parking is not allowed on Birch Road. I know that it's been allowed to, but when they say, hey, look, here it is on the ordinance that you're not allowed to park on the dirt, and some of the complaint was, is there's some oil stains on the actual dirt itself, and so we need to address that first. I've talked to Mr. Villegas to see if we can try to put a curb there to give you guys back your parking. So it is in the works. It's not about just taking it away and not. It's not about just taking it away and not giving you guys a solution. So it is being worked on. I apologize that you guys weren't notified, but again, anything that we do generally has to do with the complaint that we receive, and it's backed up, if the complaint is backed up with an ordinance or a law, we have to take it serious.
Somebody reciting, because everybody on that block, every person says that they will sign a petition. These are also people that are on the block.
So let, let me, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. It's because we just have to, we can't talk from, you know, the seating, because then, like I mentioned to the gentleman before, then I would have to allow that from everybody. But I did want him to update you, and then I'm sure they're gonna keep with the communication.
If you want to come to the station, I'd be happy to have a longer discussion about it and explain to it more in detail and show you what it says, so that way you're on the same page as us. And again, I put that out to everybody. If there's something that, you have a question, please come by the station. Everybody knows that I love to talk, so, you know, I'm good with that. With that being said, so I actually have a report from Mr. Martinez. He wanted me to, to touch base on what he's been doing. First, he'd like to send his apologies for not being present tonight due to illness. As a city manager, he's conducted weekly meetings with executive staff, reviewing workloads, addressing project updates, discussing emergency, emerging challenges. This work will continue, heading up the priority workshop that will be held with the city council in late September. The city manager has had one-on-one meetings with all directors and certified municipal officers, supervised managers, and has met with approximately 50% of city employees. The goal is to meet with all employees in the next couple of months, and the purpose is to meet and thank our most important asset here in the city, which is the workforce. The city manager is reaching out to our regional entities such as ICTC, IVEDC, and the IVFTZ, which is the Federal Trade Zone, and will participate actively on their boards to the betterment of Callexico and the region. The city manager also has conducted several tours of the city to personally familiarize himself with the ongoing challenges and opportunity, and then last but certainly not least, he wanted to take that opportunity to welcome Mr. Viegas to the team, and we're all very excited for what he's gonna bring to the city. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we move on to the commissioner reports. Do we have any commissioners?
Yes, we do. Javier Gonzales.
Honorable mayor, members of the council, staff, and public, I'm here representing the Callexico Police Commission. We finally met. We have a chair, we have a vice chair, we have two other members. I think there's something on the, on the agenda today to add some new members. And on the agenda for the commission, we had the chief explain to us about traffic. One of our commissioners was very concerned about traffic. He gave us a lot of, a lot of information regarding programs, what they're thinking about, where the issues are. Another issue that was in the agenda was the memorial, the memorial, some of the plans that they're doing, the cameras. It's very informative, so I want to encourage the council, when all these complaints come, whether it's a park or it's the police, send them to the commissions. I mean, we, we want to deal with those problems. That's why you guys appointed us. You know, I know people want to come to the council. You guys have a lot of problems. I think they should first go through the commissions. If you guys, like the parking, they can go through the commission. The chief is there, there's several police officers there. We can go into more detail, so I, I think I encourage in the public, the commission will be meeting every Wednesday, every last Wednesday of the month at 5:30 here at City Hall. One of the main things that the commission approved was something that was recommended by the 2018 Department of Justice cops report, that the commission get involved in the community, not only by providing information to the public about traffic stats, but to provide public safety events, and that's what the commission is doing. We approved that at hot committee, which we're planning to meet next Wednesday at 11:00 at the library. We already invited several people from different commissions, the Rotary Club, the Unique Car Club, CPAL. And what, what the commission wants to do is, what the commission wants to do is three things. First is hold public, public safety community fairs. We used to do it, the housing safety fair, you remember that, where Dippy Duck and McGruff landed, landed in the helicopter. That's one of the plans we're doing, but there's other members that want the, want the, that we do it, we did it Saturdays. There's other members that want the national night out. That needs, we need to talk because that needs to be done in the evening. So that's one of the plans. The other plan, it's a public safety workshop where we want to invite all the line format agencies in the area to come and sit with us and discuss what is their partnership with Callexico, how they help our, our Callexico Police Department, you know, the sheriff, the border patrol, and talk about the issues that we have. One of the main issues is graffiti, as you know. We want to invite the district attorney, we want to invite June Hall, and just sit down and discuss these issues. Why so much graffiti? What happens if they get him? All those issues. And the last one is, and that's what we're gonna need more help, is we're gonna organize, we saw their commissions already, Pat Urain is very interested with community cleanups. We'll start hitting community cleanup in different areas of the city, and we're getting volunteers, we're trying to get all those court order, whatever we want, we need, but those are very difficult. When you get, get a big group, you need supervisors. So that's just a brief, a brief thing about what we discussed in our first official, well, not the first official meeting, but we actually talked about the issues. And again, I want to encourage the public, if they have anything that's related to public safety, code enforcement, traffic, they can come to the commission every last Wednesday, 5:30 here at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other commissions?
No, no more.
Okay. So we move on to city council comments and reports of meetings attended. Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to you all. The month of August, even though we didn't have a council meeting, this council's been pretty busy at the meetings and attending events. Council, we attended the, there was some swearing ins that came on board with the city managers, the fire chief, and a couple of police officers. Councilmember Deanna Marcus and I met with different unions regarding to their concerns here at City Hall. I attended the SDSU opening of their STEM Science and Engineering Laboratories Facility in Brawley. I also attended a presentation on CalFresh Nutrition hosted by the library, and also the, I'm sorry, no, hosted by SDSU, the STEM Research. Attended, no, I'm going backwards here. CalFresh Nutrition by the library and the Family Summer Reading Program by the library. Also attended, the, the mayor and I met with stakeholders regarding our Chamber of Commerce building, and hoping to have it up and ready hopefully by late April 2026. Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon and I met, attended the bi-national committee meeting and spoke to the one in charge of the Mexicali Customs Agency regarding border traffic issues. Councilmember Lorenzo Calderon and I met with staff regarding the truck routes issues on Coal Road between ML King and Balker. Councilmember Deanna Marcus and I met with staff regarding the Heber Park expansion, and will be conducting follow-ups on that. That's all I have to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thailenda.
Good evening, members of the public and staff. I just want to say welcome to the new staff members, and you guys got a whole black month off for council meetings, so rest and learning what's going on at the city. I attended a lot of, a lot of events, not gonna go through them, but the one I went to yesterday was the, what's it called?
Mexican Independence.
The Mexican Independence Celebration. It was beautiful by community services staff, lots of fun. I even took my, my two-month-old, so I had to leave early, it was really loud. But other than that, welcome, and thank you.
Councilwoman Marcus.
Thank you. Since our last meeting, I was able to attend the swearing in of the city manager with Mayor Protem Legaspi and myself. Were able to meet with some of our union members and address and hear their concerns. Also, Mayor Protem Legaspi and myself, we attended the back-to-school celebration at the library. It was very nice to see that our students were getting backpacks and books. It was very engaging and, and very exciting with, with all the children that were present. Councilmember Calderon and myself, we were able to conduct some interviews in the past weeks, and also we were able to attend the part of the police commission, commissioners' meeting. And lastly, Mayor Protem and myself were able to meet with staff in regards to Coal Road, Heber Park, and also had a very good discussion in regards to the water and water treatment plant. So those were the things that I have to report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Calderon.
Well, thank you, thank you for joining us today, and I did what Mr. Legaspi said and Ms. Marcus. The only, I mean, these are the meetings I attended along with them, well, each one of them, because it would be a brown act if I did with all three of them. But a lot of things came out of it, especially, we went with the General that deals with the Mexican customs, and he vowed to us that he would try to increase the traffic, traffic flow going south. And he has, because I see more lanes open during the peak hours, that is four to eight, and hopefully during our holiday season, he'll honor that and make sure that we don't have lines all the way to Walmart and so forth. So thank you again, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. And it's good to hear that, because we should be receiving a presentation from Caltrans in the upcoming month or two regarding border traffic as well on our end, so, so that's good that there's teamwork going on both sides of the border. So meetings that we've attended, Mayor Protem Legaspi and myself, like you mentioned, we met with the members of the Greater Callexico Chamber of Commerce to discuss a plan on renovating the old Chamber of Commerce building on the corner of 98 and 111, and we're gonna be conducting ongoing monthly meetings until we're able to bring life back to that building. We also conducted, along with Mayor Protem Legaspi, we conducted interviews for the candidates seeking to be appointed to the Callexico Housing Authority. Also, Councilwoman Thailenda, myself, Fire Chief Contreras, we traveled to the city of Chilavista's Fire Department, and we met with their executive staff regarding their ambulance service operations. We are looking to improve and provide the highest quality service to our citizens, and they have a very good program in Chilavista that, that we're looking into, and that is not our idea, that's Fire Chief Contreras, but we believe it's a, it's a very good option for our city, which is why we went over there and, and to hear what it was about. So we're continuing to having meetings, having meetings regarding that. We are going to have a meeting about that to continue with those conversations with our assembly member pretty soon, and we've also been meeting with members of our Imperial Valley Healthcare District. We also had a meeting, Councilwoman Thailenda and city staff, myself, with Congressman Ries's office, to discuss our city's priorities, and also a grant that was awarded, $500,000 grant that had been awarded to the city of Callexico by the Army Corps of Engineers. So we will continue to have those conversations in the next two weeks. And we also have a meeting set up also in two weeks with city staff, Councilwoman Thailenda and myself, with Assemblymember Jeff Gonzalez, to discuss the funding for the Heber Park. That's all I have. We'll move over to consent agenda. Do we have any public comment for consent, I mean, any comment for consent? No? Okay. Do we have, with the exception of item 13A that was pulled for discussion, do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Nori Kumbo.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi.
Yes.
Councilmember Thailenda.
Yes.
Councilmember Marcus.
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're going now to, to review the items that were pulled from consent agenda, so that's item 13A. Resolution of the city of Callexico, I'm sorry, resolution of the city council of the city of Callexico approving the final map for Phase One of the Las Palmas Mobile Home Park consisting of 72 manufactured dwelling units and authorizing the city manager to execute the associated subdivision improvement agreement.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, honorable members of council. So this item is a procedural step required by the Subdivision Map Act. It's for a project that was approved back in 2012. It's a 466-unit mobile home park on the northwest corner of Coal Road and Balker Road. Significant improvements to the tune of $18 million have been completed to date. It was allowed to go into deterioration because of the housing crisis, so there is existing infrastructure out there that has deteriorated. This final map was originally placed as consent because essentially it's the city engineer verifying that the meets and bounds of the final map and title, the title, the legal description of the parcels are, are correct and accurate, and that the map meets the Subdivision Map Act. And so that has been done. It was plan-checked by an outside civil engineer, and it is consistent with the Map Act, and the legal description are correct, and it is ready to be recorded. So with, the request is to basically allow the first phase to move forward. The parcel would allow the developer, the filing of the final map would create a separate legal parcel, which would allow the, the, the project proponent to acquire ownership of that specific parcel in order to move forward with the first phase of the development, which consists of 72 manufactured homes. And all the onsite improvements would be private, they've all been completed, they will be inspected, and they will be required to be rehabilitated if there are, if there's any infrastructure, even if it's private, that's damaged. There are also some offsite improvements that were completed, mainly utility connections along the future extension of Spud Moreno into city sewer and water. There weren't, because it's the 72 units, there are any thresholds that are being exceeded with the original approval, the threshold being 150 units, that would require the widening of Coal Road and the, the construction of the extension of Clinton Avenue. So with this phase, it doesn't trigger that requirement. That would be subsequent phases that we would work with. So we plan-checked this, and it meets the Map Act, and we recommend that you allow for the recordation of this final map. That way, the, the project developer can proceed with the installation of the 72 manufactured homes for this first phase.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comment, Madam Clerk?
No, we don't.
Okay, does the council have any questions or comment?
No. I do have some comments. Well, good evening again, and you know what? I just want to be clear that I'm not against housing in Callexico, because we do need it. Whatever housing we can get, we need it, not only for the less, low income or high income, but we need the housing. My concern is that I think our staff have not done due diligence in researching everything on this project. This project had, was started 13 years ago, and with that said, it's my understanding that this project might have some property liens on it and also overdue property taxes. That's one. This property, if any has gone through that property, is full of trash and debris, which probably gonna take thousands of dollars to clear it up. The infrastructure that existed 12 or 13 years ago is all gone. In fact, we have manholes that are coming out of the street approximately five inches high. So we have a lot of issues with this property. And I don't know if this project falls under the mobile home park criteria, but we don't have any clearance, if it does, we don't have any clearance from the county, because the county is the one that regulates these projects. And last but not least, I'd like to see an engineering survey on that property before we do anything. The city does not need another heartstone. We're promised was made and not kept. So that's why I want to make sure that we cross our Ts and dot our Is before we give someone the authority to go out and build. And that's all I have. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other, would you like to respond to any of his questions or concerns?
Sure, sure. The applicant is also here, if you'd like to answer. But before recordation of the final map, it has to, any liens or any taxes that are outstanding have to be cleared from the assessor's office. So, that's one of the requirements, actually, that's stipulated in conditions of approval for recordation of final map. And the city engineer will inspect the existing improvements and require any rehabilitation that's needed in order to make sure that they're functional. And also, a lot, the applicant has already started working on removing some of the debris and junk material that has been placed out there over the years. And so, hopefully, this will kind of put a stop to the degradation of the site, which could continue. This will allow acquisition of a parcel that allow for that first phase of development. And hopefully, it'll instill confidence in future developers who may want to develop the subsequent phases. It still has to, so there are still other items that have to be completed even before they place a single manufactured home on the site. They need to have us review their CCNRs. It has to, they have to form a homeowner's association that has to be certified by the state. And then, when that's in place, they still have to obtain permits from the County of Imperial, because the county regulates and issues permits for mobile homes. And so, they still have, and they have to pay all of our fees, including school fees and our developer impact fees.
And we're not waiving any fees, correct?
No, we're not waiving, nor have any fee waivers been requested with this project.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Pending to any additional comment from the applicant, with regard to the infrastructure, the existing infrastructure, I already made preliminary review of the site, but in conversation with the applicant, we have made that very clear that before moving forward to any construction, we need a certification from his engineering firm about all and any component for the infrastructure, even though this is a private community. So, city is not in risk to be forced to go over there and make any repairs if a water valve is gone or the road is not in good condition. That's a full responsibility of their homeowner's association, even though before letting pull any permit, any construction permit or installation of the new homes, city staff and Poliworks Department is going to ensure that everything is in compliance. Rest assured, this is not a blank check to the developer, it's just the first move to make that project happen.
Okay. Any other council member, or would the applicant, would you like to speak? No, you're fine? Okay. You had another question?
One more question. I know that 12 years or 13 years ago, the bond for the contractor was waived. We're not waiving the bond for this contractor.
The subdivision improvement...
The bond that's required for construction.
That's for, yeah, offsite improvements, so there is a stipulation in the subdivision improvement. If there's any surety required, that may still be required by the city engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the document. Yeah, and it's something we have been, it's part of the discussion we have with the developer.
All right.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Okay, do I have a motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will go on to item number 17, that we were going to move up above 14, and it is appointment of general commissioner to the Callexico Housing Authority Board. Do we have any comment?
No, we don't.
Okay. So, do we have a council member that would like to make a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Arturo Rioseco.
Do I have a second? Okay, no second. Do I have another nomination?
I'd like to nominate Guadalupe Zamudio.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Who was it again?
Guadalupe Zamudio?
Guadalupe.
Did you second?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Thailanda, second. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now, we move on to item number 14. Approval of Fire Department Dispatch Modernization and Station Alerting System Upgrade, AVD, Automated Voice Dispatch, AVD Project for fiscal year 2025-2026 in the amount of $51,344.44, which includes equipment, software licenses, installation, training, and initial support. Do we have a presentation? No? Okay, do we have a...
I'd like to comment on it.
Yeah, we'll go after it if there's any public comment. Is there any comment on this item? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Calderon.
Well, what did it take so long, Chief? Where are you? Over here. You keep changing on it. I commend you for getting our public safety up to par. I think it's important that you're able to respond when our citizens make that call, and this will help drastically.
Thank you, sir. And I also want to give the, this is also the effort of staff. Our firefighters are putting in endless work on the job after hours, trying to get us up to date, right? With, obviously, with this automatic voice dispatch would be the first in the county to have, and that's awesome, and that's appreciated because of their work. So, I wanted to thank them all as well.
And this is also going to assist the dispatchers when they're working with the citizens, giving them more time to give, for them to give more time to the citizens out there. So, good job on bringing this on board.
That is correct, because not only they deal with fire, they deal with PD, foot traffic, traffic, and any other complaints or issues that are taken on dispatch, so they can coordinate and free us up on our end and be able to handle those tasks a lot better.
And even though it's electronic, there's a 30-second buffer, I believe, a buffer that where dispatcher needs, if he has, he or she has to interrupt, they can do so.
Correct. There is a buffer there that if there's any additional information relating to any type of call, dispatch is able to tap in and give that message over the air.
Okay, if we don't have any other comments or questions, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 15, approval and adoption of City Council Charitable Donation Policy. Do we have any comment from the public?
Yes, we do. Jun Kim?
I, I have something like, I like to, I am glad to see the council members too, they try to help the community, but I see as a wrong way maybe people understanding is the city gonna be, have more smelly, because first of all, we don't have funds, we don't have general fund, we don't have money for the citizens. And in same time, we want to have donating $2,500 for the five entity. So, that's a questioning. So, we gonna sacrifice a portion to donating some entity? Meanwhile, we have so many lack of supporting the community, like everybody calling the path hall. And worst thing is, any tax money shouldn't be on the individuals, if it's individual's discussions or decisions. So, which is, you guys want to have a five council member, one of each council member, $500 donating any entities, or because they have some little limiting, but they shouldn't be there. They giving personal favor from the council member to future health or future relations with some entity. If it really wants to help the people, if we do have money, they should decide by majority vote for the entity. That way, we not gonna see any smelly action from the council members. So, I really like to see our council member using that one for the personal candidate So, if we really think you need, if you have money to donating for the communities, entities, please do majority vote, majority vote, not only one person, one individual's council decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comment?
No more comments.
Okay, do we have question or comment by the council?
I would just like to say that these funds are designated for schools, for clubs, that we, that we can support, especially our sports clubs, because I think, speaking with the rest of the council, these are the kind of organizations that we want to support. The reason that we feel this is important, because it also outlines the kind of donations that we can't make. And so, it does limit us of where this money is going. So, that's why I have no problem adopting this, because it's more, it's more delineated. It's not open. So, I hope that can appease your questions, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to add that, go ahead.
I have a question. I don't know who knows the history of this donation, but can someone tell me how long this donation process has existed?
The, from what I, what I found out was, they've been doing this for, I want to say, maybe like four to five years, where council members were allocated to...
Forty-five years?
No, four to five. Four to five. So, it's where they were allocated these funds, and there is discretion, so like, it doesn't have to be a donation, it's discretionary. So, the council member can choose how to use those funds, but historically, it's always used for donations to different agencies. We wanted to make the process, because before, there was no process, we didn't have a policy or anything, so it was pretty much the same here at the council meeting, you know, oh, you know, I want to donate my 500 to, you know, whatever agency, and we wanted to make the process more formal.
Yeah, now it's in writing.
And now it's in writing, yes.
What we can do...
And there's restrictions, and there's follow-up, and they have to, you know, qualify, so there's a lot more formality.
Thank you, Corla.
Anybody else? Okay, what I was gonna add was what you said, that it's a process that's been occurring for at least four to five years. We're just making it official, putting it in writing, establishing a policy, and ensuring that those donations stay within our city. It is also something that is customary. I know the County of Imperial also has a donation per supervisor, so this is nothing new, this is not nothing that we started or an idea that we started, we're just making it, we're putting it in writing so that we ensure that donation stays within our city. So, do I have a motion?
I motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Noricumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, item number 16, authorize city manager to sign change order number one with Rob Engineering Inc. in the amount of $88,776 for Skoronee Road pavement rehabilitation state project number LPPSB1L-5168034.
Yeah. Good evening. This project actually is going to address what the concern of the citizen who is here. The restoration of Skoronee Road began on July 23rd, last July 23rd, by Rob Engineering, who is the contractor, worked with the contract. And although the improvement plans are requesting some kind of rehabilitation of the manholes, what we did right before start construction is to go and do an extensive inspection of these manholes, because these are, it's a critical component that if, if not in good condition, create another problem in the future. So, we have circulate a report with the pictures of the interior of the manholes. So, we did a determination that these brick manholes won't last very long and is only an imitation for a future sinkhole. So, basically, I took the executive decision to pause the project, the construction of the, or the rehabilitation of the asphalt, and request additional funding to remove and replace four out of the six manholes within the area to be improved. The funding is not exactly an additional funding being requested, as we have an account to rehabilitate the manholes. So, basically, what we are doing here is to anticipate the rehabilitation of manholes that are in much need help throughout the city. So, basically, we're just using the money before time. Approving this change order is going to actually give us a lot of support to provide a high-quality project at the end of the construction.
Let's go, let's see, do we have any public or any comment on this item? No? Okay. Any questions or comment from the council?
I have a question for Mr. Villegas. Just for, for my knowledge, was this part of the bid process, when we, they all went to bid or to see the bid, to bid on the Skoronee pavement? The manholes?
Yeah, well, yeah, there is some, a line item. I wasn't here, I've been here...
Well, I know, I don't want to hold you accountable.
Yeah, but, yeah, the, there is some line item for interior lining of the manhole just to reinforce or to protect it. But these manholes are far to be in condition for that kind of rehabilitation, and that's why we actually are recommending the removal and replacement. Unfortunately, I, yeah, I wasn't here.
Well, you didn't answer my question. Was this, the manholes part of the bid?
Yeah, it was part of it, but not this kind of improvement. It was just...
And the only reason, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the only reason I'm asking you is because we have a lot of projects that we're going to be paving a lot of streets in Callexico, and I know for a fact that on the west side, there's manholes that look worse than what you just showed us.
Yeah.
So, I hope that you consider that when they're bidding, so make sure that we get the right bid on these projects.
Yeah, you are totally correct, actually, and it's something that we have been discussing with the city manager and some of the council members, that the Poliworks Department really needs additional staff to start reviewing internally the projects, because I'm not saying the CM or the external companies that have been helping the city are not fully correct, but being able to do a full review of the proposed improvements is really a must, because we actually, based on our previous experience, identify things like this that shouldn't happen, because basically, what we want to do is a high-quality project, not leaving behind other problems that are not supposed to be part of the scope of work, but we have to fix any infrastructure that is not in condition to be part of the project. And sometimes, if those components are not part of the scope of work or are not paid by the grants we have in securing, we can actually get additional money from other funding sources to fix those in order to have a permanent solution of the areas. Rest assured, we are going to be on top of that, because it's an observation I have made to, as I said, council members and city manager, and we all have agreed that, yes, it's, we have to go the extra mile to make it safe and sound.
Thank you, Mr. Villegas.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve?
I do have one question, sorry. Who's engineer of record?
It's West. Timmy Horn, yeah.
Okay, so when they went and they did their evaluations, they didn't identify this initially?
According to the correspondence, nope. Yeah, we actually submit a question about this, and they said, well, basically, they said, well, we were told the manholes were in good shape, and I did like the answer. Yeah, unfortunately, I wasn't here, but that's not the kind of answers I'm anticipating to receive from a well-respected design company.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate you asked that question, because we learn from everything, and hopefully, we'll learn from this too, since we are gonna be doing a lot of projects. And I actually, I never appreciate a change order, but I do appreciate that at least we caught this before we went in there, because like you said, it would have caused sinkholes, and it would have been a lot costlier to the citizens to get this repaired, so thank you. So do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Recom, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Norikumbo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Yes.
Councilmember Thailanda?
Yes.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Calderon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Item number eighteen, removal and replacement of current appointee to the police advisory traffic and code enforcement commission with a new appointment to the same commission by Mayor Norikumbo. So I just want to first state that there is no issues with my current commissioner, there's only conflicting availability with the meetings, so therefore, we are going to have to replace with, I'm gonna appoint commissioner, I mean.
Madam Mayor, we have a public comment?
Oh, we have a public comment?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Javier Gonzalez, two thirty-seven. My comment, Honorable Council Mayor, my only comment is that most of the commissions have been inactive, and it's pretty, it's pretty, it's pretty sad when you're a commissioner, and we meet once a month, and you're there, and you don't get a quorum. They don't even call. They don't even call to, like, we know that things happen, but we meet once a month. I keep my, my appointee, which is Lisa Thailanda, I keep her up to date, and if I'm ever going to miss, I'm gonna ask her to replace me, because the municipal code allows for the council member that appointed that person to participate in the meeting, to make quorum and to vote. So I don't know if the other commissions are having trouble, but, and I'm not here to, whoever's gonna get replaced or appointed, but we gotta get, you, as a council member, have to be responsible for your commissioners. You have to talk to them, what's going on. I keep my, my appointed council member up to date on what we do after the meetings. I let her know we didn't have a quorum, or we did this, so just let you know, whoever you're gonna be appoint, make sure they take it seriously. If they're not going to attend, that's fine, things happen, you can replace them. If it's an emergency that during, going to the meeting, they have an accident or something, they can call, we're there, the chief is there, we all have things to do, and we're waiting to see if somebody shows up, that's not good. Just want to let you know. And I just heard that you guys have money. Those cleanups are gonna cost money, and one of the complaints the commissions have been, the Dr. Park volunteers were complaining is the city never provides anything. Maybe your money, your five hundred money, can go into one of the cleanup for hot dogs, trash bags, the city never provides trash bags to volunteers, just I want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other comment?
No more comments.
Okay, so I will be appointing Angela Moreno as my police and advisory commission. All right, so we go back to the agenda. Item number nineteen, appointment by Mayor Protem Legaspi to the police advisory traffic and code enforcement commission.
Yes, I'm gonna be appointing Ms. Alexis Aranhel for that position.
Okay, so now we move on to informational items. Item number twenty, receive and file community services commission meetings for special meeting of June ninth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have any report on that, or no? Just. Okay, no? All right, item number twenty-one, receive and file library board of trustees minutes for meeting of June second, twenty twenty-five. No, no, not actually necessary. All right, so moving on to future agenda items. Mayor Protem Legaspi?
Like I said previously, we're gonna be conducting lots of follow-ups, especially with the Chamber of Commerce, the truck route issues on Cole Road, and on that one, we're gonna be talking to the businesses, there's two of them, the two gasoline stations, so, and also the Heber Park expansion, so there's gonna be lots of follow-ups on this.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Thailanda?
Okay, I have, I have quite a few. So, a couple months ago, I think it was in January, February, when we adopted the updated commissions, I did ask staff if they could bring back a proposal for the traffic, I'm sorry, police, traffic, and code enforcement commission to be able to take applications. I know, for example, like, we had the individuals here tonight who had concerns regarding the no parking. In other cities, that type of commission will take an application, if it's like a request for a new stop sign, they'll review it with staff, and then they'll make a decision. And so what I've been requesting previously is that staff brings us a proposal on what that commission can, you know, approve, deny, or recommend to council, so that they hear it first, like code enforcement cases, or traffic requests, so, and I know that, so it'd be Carlos Chief and the city manager, that's one. So policies process, maybe an application that we can see, what they can act upon. The forensic audit, I know that the RFPs were received, I've been asking for months to get an update, at least, not asking anything else, just an update. And also, school fees update, I know that they are circulating their proposed user fees, so if we can have a school fees update, and what they're proposing be brought as an informational item to city council for the next meeting, I would really appreciate that. And also, this is a short story, really quick, but leading up into a request for chief. I was driving the other day, it was the afternoon on Sunday, and out of nowhere, an E, the electric scooters comes out, and I'm driving slow, because I'm scared to hit anybody, and I'm going slow out of my house, and this young adult, or young teenager, we'll say young teenager, is on the scooter without a helmet, they don't make noise, and given a lot of the tragedies that have happened locally, I'd like that looked into, because he was zooming in the middle of the street, he would have crashed into me, and if there's no cameras around, who says that I'm innocent, right? So that's terrifying. And not only did it happen during the day, but last night, I'm leaving my house, and it's dark, and my streetlight is out, so I'll go report that later, but the streetlight's out, and not only the kid, but his father is on like, the electric bikes, a black one, and he's on a scooter, and neither of them are wearing helmets, and they're in the middle of the street. And so I'd like to see a potential ordinance, some rules, regulations, so that we can hold them accountable, or tell them, you know, right in the, in the bike lane, or where to ride, because they're, you know, they're not respecting the traffic laws. And then, you know, I'm respecting traffic laws, and if I hit him, well, not only is that traumatizing for me, but what happens if, you know, they don't make it, or something like that? So I'd like to see something brought before the council, what we're doing to address those.
School presentations?
Yeah, and the schools, the kids up at the high school, I live near the high school, and I see it the most, they're writing on them, and so, yeah, like, Councilmember Legaspi said, school presentations, outreach, but also an ordinance to solidify that, so that there's a little bit more oomph to have them, you know, maybe a violation, or a little ticket or something, because, you know, it's, it's too many tragedies, and they're not even wearing helmets, and you can't even hear them. So, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Marquez?
Okay, so I know that I spoke to Mr. Villegas in regards to this, but I would like to have a maintenance schedule for the downtown area, not only for the alleyway cleanups, because I know that Ms. Fallowmead had already provided that for us, but maybe, you know, bringing one, or starting one, so that downtown is definitely something that we want to target, and also our maintenance for our parks. We've gotten a lot of complaints in regards to how they're looking, and we need to make sure that we maintain them. Also, I would like to have a report in regards to the balance that still exists for the improvements of both Rodriguez and Nosotros Park, because I know that these were supposed to be presented, but once again, we didn't get them. And question, have we installed the restrooms at Rodriguez Park, or what is the status of those?
I have not that information. Yeah, sorry, the first time I heard about this, but I'll find out and submit a report on the restrooms. With regard to the maintenance of downtown and the parks, this is something we have been discussing internally with our Parks Division. We are trying to work on a strategy due to, we don't have enough staff, but is under our priority list, yeah, beside the other commitments we have.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Calderon?
Yeah, we talk about follow-ups, we just say things and don't follow up. Well, my main one is the Heber Park project. We have eight point one million hanging over us, and we're running out of time. And this should be like, we should be getting informed as to what the process is, because I do not want to lose the eight point one million dollars. So hopefully, maybe every meeting you can tell us where you're at, because I don't want to be the one that had to return eight point one million on my watch. And I don't think any member that's sitting here would want to either.
Yes, actually, Heber Park is one of the hot potatoes I have in my plate. Anyways, so far, I mean, since I've been here these three weeks, I have had three meetings with now a local company to actually find a solution to start construction as soon as possible. So basically, I, we have here some, about some options. Obviously, the eight point five million dollars now are more like seven point four, because the city already used some part of the monies for the design, the plans that are already done. So basically, we are, I mean, visiting option like reducing the size of the building, the amenities, but yeah, this is something, it's an ongoing topic in a daily basis, and definitely, in the following council meeting, I'll have additional information, but as tonight, I can tell you at least three meetings have been held, and I would say we have options. I can see we can make it, it's not probably the best park the community was anticipating to have, but losing the money is not an option.
Yeah, well, I might want to make a suggestion here, you go down to Heber, California, and they built a gym for five million dollars, and it's a beautiful gym. It has showers, has laundry services, and everything for their kids, so you might want to go check that gym out, and me, probably can build the same one for the eight point one millions that we have.
As a matter of fact, we're gonna be visiting three gyms, the Calapat, the Heber, and Vincent Memorial.
Yeah.
So, and we're gonna be meeting again on Tuesday at three thirty PM, so follow-up is a key word, so I've been, I've been on top of, we've been on top of it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Something's gonna happen between, before twenty twenty-six.
Okay, Mr. Legaspi, it's my turn.
Yeah. No, no, and part of the problem, and just to address your comment, but part of the, I mean, the problem is that the plants were designed to be really ambitious project, so the option is basically what you just said. Why try the Louis Vuitton of the parks, when we can actually make an affordable park? So it's going to be beautiful, it's going to be really what our community needs, and it's going to make happen, I mean.
All right, appreciate it. The next one is the cannabis program. We talked about it, we send directions and everything, we haven't heard to see what has been done with this program. So a follow-up on that would be appreciated. And also, what's new right now, I'd like to follow up on the grant status from the new staffer, as to where we're at with grants, if we can follow up on that.
Yes, I mean, we have actually several grants, and we have been working on those. I don't have specific dates, but so far, we are not in risk to lose anyone, and what we have done, I mean, Lucy has been helping me on that one, we have prepared a list with the specific amounts and dates that we need to be met, and yeah, in our following meeting, I'll be glad to provide you with a spreadsheet with the specific for all of each one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Villegas.
Yeah, sure, you have something to say?
It's Laura Bowen for the grants. Yes, I've been working with the departments, we're being creating.
Well, you don't have to give us the report today.
Oh, okay, you just want to, okay.
This is the future, the next, but I appreciate your efforts.
Yes, yes, yeah, I've been working with the police department, with Public Works, with planning, I mean, we've been looking for funding opportunities, for sure.
It's coming in the future, so get ready.
And there's so many things that have been fixed before that.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen.
Okay, thank you. I just want to add something on the park, the Heber Park, because yes, you're absolutely right, it's an item that absolutely is in the top of all of our priorities, because we do not want to lose our grant funding. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, and I mentioned it on, before, that we do have, Councilwoman Thailanda and myself do have a meeting set up with our assembly member, who happens to be in two weeks, who happens to be the State of California Parks and Rec Commissioner Vice Chair, Commission Vice Chair. So we're gonna meet with him, and the staff, city manager, Public Works, and we're gonna, we're gonna discuss, you know, let him know what the issue is, and obviously, you know, the recommendations from Public Work, the recommendations of doing it in phases. I know last year, we had a work, there was an item on the agenda, and we had people come out from the community who really expressed, you know, the idea of not modifying the plan, because they wanted the gym, they wanted an indoor air-conditioned area. So from what I gathered, is people are really looking forward to the park as is, so what we're trying to see is, you know, if we can do it in phases, because it's gonna take some time anyway, do it in phases, and so we can start, and then while we look for the rest of the funding, and then it does help that our assembly members on, you know, that commission, so it's, so just wanted to put that out, because we're all working on that issue, all of us, and it's definitely a very important matter. Okay, so for future agenda items, number one on my list is capital improvement workshop. I have, I have like thirty items, but I'm only gonna throw five at you guys. So capital improvement workshops, if we can have it within the next, hopefully, thirty days, a workshop to kind of see what all those sixty projects are, and kind of see what the funding, the deadlines, the priorities are. This one, I just want to float it out there, because I know we're currently doing, you know, we're busy financially, but I had mentioned it before, and about the zero-based budget policy, so I want to start looking at it, and start looking at the policy, drafting a policy. It might be more, you know, for the city manager, but I want to float it out there, so that when we do start our next budget, the departments know that we're gonna be looking at, you know, the, start from scratch on your requests, and, so that, that's just, obviously, it's gonna come to the council for approval, but I just want to put that out there, that that's something I'm gonna be looking to request. Also, number three, the FAA just awarded the city of Callexico seventy-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars to reseal the runway to extend its useful life for our Callexico Airport. We already know that we have issues with our airport, we've been in a deficit for the past three years, so we need to start working on what the plan is, especially because we've got some funding for it, so we need to start having those conversations on the airport. Also, we had a town hall meeting for the Cordoba. Also, we had a town hall meeting for the Cordoba Park situation. I know you've been having conversations about it with the residents, but, but we need to do something. It's been prolonged for too many years already and it's always the same thing and, and we need to come up with a plan. So now that you're here, I'm, I'm sure you're gonna give us something that's gonna be a win-win for everyone, a proposal. And then, item number five, I'd like to see a report on update on our parking meters, chief, because those, that income was projected on the budget and we're already on the third month into this fiscal year. So we don't want to be caught up in a deficit. So if you can get that to us for next, next meeting, I'd appreciate it. So if nobody else has anything else, I'd like to motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Second by?
Oh, we have the second?
Yes.
I thought it was faster. Okay, second by Councilman Calderon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion adjourned at 8:27 PM.